I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ocean Springs Planning Commission meeting, February 11th. If you don't mind, silence your phones. Would you stand? Joey Conwell is going to lead us in a prayer and Marshall Johnson will lead us in a pledge.
Yeah, Lord, thank you for another beautiful day, Lord. Thank you for every day you give us and help us to be glorifying you every morning we wake up, Lord. And thank you that we are here tonight and we're doing everything we can in your honor, Lord. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick notes, all commissioners are present besides Andy Feeland. Do I have a motion to review and amend the minutes from January 14th, 2025?
Make a motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Let's take a motion to accept the agenda.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the agenda.
I make a motion to accept the amendment. Amendment to the agenda of January 14th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Wait, wait, there was no amendment, was there?
No, I corrected myself.
Just the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want me to say it again?
Let me say it again.
No, motion to approve the agenda.
Right, motion to approve the agenda. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, moving on to old business. We do not have any old business. Moving on to new business. Under, we have public hearing on the request for Madison Place Phase Two, Elliott Land Development requesting a preliminary plat approval for 51 lots subdivision. Wade?
One second. I'd like to make a motion to submit this email that was submitted into the public record.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Do we need to go to public hearing?
I want to hear and then we'll go on to public.
Okay. You said this is the preliminary plat approval for the Madison Place Phase Two subdivision, shown there on the screen, on the east of Riley Road, and involves an extension of Madison Place Drive to Gibson Road and then also to an extension of Pine Haven Drive to the east of. Go up here to this larger, see, kind of get a perspective on the. Give you a little perspective on the larger area. It says it involves an extension there of Madison Place Drive and to connect to Pine Haven Drive. This was previously heard by y'all as a sketch plat approval back in 2021. It was recommended for approval at that time with the, they said the same lot layout with 51 lots. And the whole purpose of the preliminary plat versus the sketch plat, the preliminary plat is to provide for the actual construction of the subdivision infrastructure, the streets, sanitary sewers, water lines, drainage, and so forth. Actual construction of homes would not start until the approval of the final plat. This stage right here is the preliminary plat stage. Basically, as I said, the preliminary plat is consistent with the approvals involved in the sketch plat, which point out that the sketch plat indicated five-foot wide sidewalks along all streets, which is the standard of the GC. And one of the current preliminary plat cross-section indicated four-foot sidewalks that would need to be amended to be consistent with the sketch plat or for y'all to grant a waiver of that. I think that really sums up the staff's view of this and do have folks from Elliott Land Development here if you have questions for them. Thank you. If y'all have any questions for me also.
Before we open that, does any of the commissioners have any comment for the planning department?
I make a motion to go into.
I've got one. Just for the commissioners' purposes, I know they know, but can you describe this preliminary plat phase, no homes will be built until the final plat phase, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's another phase after preliminary plating is complete, they'll have to come back with final plat recommendation approval on board, is that right?
That is correct. The preliminary plat, the final plat would also come to the planning commission for approval also.
And it's after that final plat potentially being approved that the construction of homes can.
Exactly, that is correct, exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Wade. Okay, so we're going to move on to open it for a public comment, I notice.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay. Normally, we get three minutes per subject and everything. I'm going to open it up to five minutes per person to talk about this. No more than 30 minutes for one subject. Okay. If the Elliott Homes would like to get up and represent and talk. So, thank you. Name and address, please.
I'm Amanda Croce with Meritage Homes here on behalf of Elliott Land Development. We are respectfully requesting preliminary plat approval for Madison Place Phase Two, as Wade had mentioned. At this time, we have addressed all comments on the civil plans and we're hopefully ready to move forward on this development. Just a couple of key points I would like to point out on this project. As you may be aware, we did not develop Phase One. It was done in 2004. We purchased the lots from the developer and we constructed our homes on those lots. The city had concern with the existing roads in Phase One cracking and we agreed to resurface the Madison Place Drive and the existing roadway once we start developing Phase Two. So it's a win-win solution for the city. We would have, we would fix them and we would do that once we are done with utilities in Phase Two and all resurfaced. The delay, there was a tiny delay, as Wade has mentioned, between 2021s and now, it took so long because we actually went through the Corps of Engineers, we had a permit modification for a wetland permit, which they actually determined it was a significant reduction in the environmental impact with this redesign versus the old one. So it took a while to get through all of that approval process. We have received approval from the Corps of Engineers. We were able to conserve all the heavy wetlands, keep homes away from the drainage areas, and minimize the roads and utilities. That will be maintained by the city of Ocean Springs after everything's turned over. And also, a question had come up from the staff in review with Wade about the Elliott Homes and Meritage. So Elliott Homes has merged with Meritage Homes. It was not sold and it was an opportunity for both companies to leverage their resources and position for a greater outcome. Today, we're building the same product, the same Elliott houses, but utilizing the experience of the resources from a billion-dollar company from Meritage. So just to clear up any confusion on that aspect as well. Tonight, I do have with me Danny Boudreaux, who is a civil engineer on this project, and also Vince Tinsley, who is a wetlands consultant. So if there's any further questions, technical questions that these guys can answer for you, we're all here for you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any comment?
Yeah, I've got one quick question. This might be for the engineers. The sidewalks went from five feet, or yeah, from five feet on the preliminary to, or from the sketch to four feet on the preliminary. What was the reason for that?
Can you add a first line, or we, it's a, it's an extra something? Can we just do five feet? Is that a five feet? Okay. We can do five feet. It was just probably just a missed comment.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Gotcha.
We can do five feet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If anybody in the audience that is in favor or against it, would you please step up to the podium? Address and name.
If you can't try to talk into the mic, it's not just for us in here, it's for, this is live stream too, so. I should hear you. Hello, my name is Easy Rider. I live at 4596 Pine Haven Road. I am actually at the end of Pine Haven Road, just adjacent to the area to be modified. I rise in opposition to this primarily for the connection of the back of the Lakeview neighborhood to be connected to any other access. There is a large concern within the community that there will be a lot of size of the uptake and fuel traffic. There is also a large concern that any modification of that area over there will impact negatively the drainage situation that's currently there. Tonight, understanding is proposed to be allow emergency services and alternate means of education of the neighborhood in case an event arise that facilitates such a need. But the way the roads actually flood currently, just as they are even in the area not to be modified, would make that not utilitarian. It actually cuts off right where the road would be extended to a point where it's not drivable for the rest of the neighborhood. So that benefit is not workable unless you're going to rework the entire neighborhood. The area to be developed is also acts as a water sum, collects rainwater, allows it to pull up for the drainage system that currently is there to dissipate it over time even after rains come in. This area experienced heavy rainfall even in a time during, around Katrina and Zeta came through. We had no flooding in any of the homes, but we did have flooding of roadways and things of this nature. The community is very well aware that single point of entry and egress from the neighborhood is dangerous to accessibility for first responders and emergency responders and our means of exfiling the neighborhood in case of that need. They are more than willing to accept such risk, understanding exactly what that risk is if we can keep a single point of access for the entire neighborhood. Elliott Homes, I was able through the planning commission to get a large degree of information they submitted to the planning commission. They did a great job of handling rainfall, drainage. As a layman, even I could understand it to a certain degree. They seem to be very knowledgeable in understanding how the water will exfil out from that area to be developed. I don't see any indication that they've taken into account the impact to the current homes that are in the back end of Lakeview subdivision. The current drainage system is basically operating at max. If there's any impediment, it backs up very easily. Any additional drainage into that or removal, again, of that land as a sum to act as a collection area for water to collect that the drainage system can't handle at the time and not act as that buffer is of great concern to the neighborhood. I beg very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Samantha Bagnell. I also live on Pine Haven, but on the other side from where he lives. We have lived there for over 10 years. My issue with this is not with the actual Madison Place subdivision, it is with the connecting road into the Lakeview subdivision. Like he spoke to, a majority of our neighborhood in our group took a poll and they were majorly against the road connecting into our neighborhood.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent. We have no feelings on their development of Madison Place except for the connection into Lakeview. Our roads are already in a need of repair in multiple different areas and in their proposition, I did not see any repairs for our roads, only the Madison Place roads. That increased traffic into our neighborhood would cause a need for that. There are a lot of cars that are parked on our neighborhood roads and with our little bit of traffic, it's not a problem. If you have through traffic coming through, that can see an increase for potential damages, potential issues with children that play in the area. We also, we've looked into any times we've had a wreck outside on Highway 90, which happens. There was a major one, I think, last year, but we have exits through tractor supply and through rip crew. So if there is an accident right there, Highway 90, we still have avenues to get out of the neighborhood. So even when there was that brush fire behind the neighborhood that was started over there by the sun flex, we did not have any issues getting her out. We do have extensive flooding, especially on the roads coming in and in our area on the roadways, but not our homes. And our worry is if they develop that road and take away those wetlands, it will push more of that water into our houses that is currently affected by the roads. Another thing is the through traffic. There is a lot of transient traffic on Riley Road, CC Camp through that area. There's a lot of people that are walking, riding bikes, doing things. And I've done research, the petty crime level in that area is a lot higher than within the Lakeview neighborhood. I do not want there to be a road that accesses to my room, that gives people walking ability to come to my house and anything that they need. So that is where we stand on it for us. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm William Benner, and I live in Ward One, but I have a vested interest in a house on Pine Haven, the one on the northeast corner. The connector road, when did it become the requirement to have two egress? No, they got one Gibson Road, Highway nine. They have one go out Riley Road. Is that, how long is that road? Quarter mile? How long? Is it going to be a dumping ground again like Gibson Road is past the north of it's bound? It's a dumping ground. You see that one house standing alone up there? That's my family's house. Thirty acres surrounding that home. It's owned by Miss Hidden Outdoor. Flat conservation. Future plan downstream, take Pine Haven on out to Highway 57. You have a problem right there. If you've ridden up to the end of Lakeview on Pine Haven, they didn't fire mitigation a few months ago. It was rough. They mitigated, they did their job. That connector road. You go to Pine Haven, you see teenagers walking the street on the sidewalk, riding bicycles, families, couples. Yes, they parked their cars in front of their houses. You open that road up, they're going to come right over Riley Road, right down Lakeview. They look a drag strip. They've already got collapsed infrastructure now. They paved right over it. They didn't fix the infrastructure that was caving in on the sewer system. They paved over it. It's collapsed it again. How much more traffic you want to found across a manhole before you got a tire in manhole? Won't take much. Yeah, that connector road, it's not good. All of a sudden, we got up two accesses for how many homes in that little area? Think about it, guys. Think about it. Development. Phase two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Which phase is going to be their one-on-one? Mitigate. You mitigate, wetlands. Where are you mitigating? North Mississippi. The Alton. Where do you go by wetlands that people of Ocean Springs can't enjoy the pine savanna if we wipe that out? We're running out. Running out of acres. You take five, 13 acres, this calls for, you've lost 13 acres. Okay? Think about that. That connector road right there could be the downfall of Lakeview. Petty crime happening. Cars getting hit. Mailboxes run over. Speeders. People start selling out. People start moving, renting their homes. Property value's going down. Now what do you have? You have a bigger problem of a nice neighborhood today. Thank you.
Sir, can I ask you real quick? Sir, can I ask you real quick? I'm looking, I'm looking at these plans as best I can. Can you do me a favor and go up to that map and point where that connector road is? Because I'm not seeing it on the plans.
I'm seeing it on what's printed out right here. That connector road, there's, there's a picture of that connector road. You scroll down to it. One of, one of, one of the other documents. One of the pages shows.
There you go. You see that one right here? This is, this is the road that comes in. This is, this is already built.
Right.
What they're wanting to do is up here and down, and then this connector road is going to come right there over to the backside of Lake.
Okay. What's the distance between this last house here and the first house on the foot of it? Good question. I can't read the numbers. I couldn't find it anywhere.
So the connector road is from Gibson connecting to Pine Haven Drive, not Lakeview Drive?
Here's Gibson.
Here's Pine Haven.
Okay, so we're talking about a road that's going to connect Gibson to Pine Haven. We're not talking about Lakeview Drive?
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's.
So it's.
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah, so where this little road is right there, the retention bond, right there. Yeah.
Okay. So just, just north of the retention bond. I got you.
You're drawing off of Pine Haven, there's a short street, then you're going to Lakeview.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand exactly what we're asking.
Well, why? Why do you need that? Gibson Road? No, Riley Road.
I got you.
Gibson Road.
Is there anybody else for or against? Thank you. Name and address, please.
This one, thank you. My name's Steve Parker and I'm a resident of Madison Place One. I'm at 106 West Wind Corp, Ocean Springs, adjacent to Madison Place Two, the conservation area. I'm current, I'm a current member of the 39-member Madison Place One HOA and will be a member of the 91-member Madison Place One Plus Two HOA. I don't know what we're going to call it yet. I should disclose I'm an environmental consultant, that I've had Elliott Homes as a client in the past, but I am not engaged in representing Elliott on this matter. I should also disclose I've been in very productive conversations with Brandon Elliott, his consultant, Vish Tinsley, with Ecological Assets Management, and Sarah Geis with the Land Trust for the Mississippi Ocean Springs. So very good, open conversations. Sent him my comments when I sent it to you. I commented on this project before during the 2021 sketch plat. It was a little preliminary. My comments tonight are going to be similar. I also put similar comments in the Corps of Engineers permitting process. Comments were similar in nature. I am not in opposition of the project. I'm not in opposition of the construction of the homes. I'm not a NIMBY because literally I look out my backyard and it's there. So I'm, you know, just to be clear, just wanted to let you know where I'm coming from. I request that the preliminary plat approval be conditioned with the following three conditions. I require that the current and ultimate covenant juror of the Declaration of Restricted Covenants on the Conservation Easement be required to mitigate and manage the current fire hazard that exists directly adjacent to the lots and future homes abiding the Conservation Easement by implementation of ongoing forestry management practices on the Conservation Easement. Now, I'll just pause there since you've given five minutes. The current Corps of Engineers permit allows for conservation management. I think that says as a result of my comment, they have not applied the conditions there and said, for now, you preserve it. And if you want to do forestry management, you'd have to come back to the Corps and the other agencies to modify the permit. I would think they'd be in favor of that since you get more ecological benefits. I'm in favor of ecological benefits, that's not the reason. I'm much more concerned about fire moving through to adjacent homes. We did see a pretty dramatic fire in 2020 that went through the area, hopped over the power line, hopped Riley Road, and then kind of caught fire across it. So high wind day, dry conditions, kids off for COVID. That's, that's how it happened. Condition number two, construction shall not commence until the Corps permit, and I got the permit reference number in there, has been amended and the term at the discretion of the USACE and Resource Agencies is embedded in the Conservation Easement. They, they just have to review it to allow for forestry management as specified in condition number one. And then the third condition, construction shall not commence until an agreement has been established on how the covenantureship would be transferred and how ongoing forestry management will be paid for to ensure the long-term elimination of fire hazard exposure to residences of Madison Place. So that's the request. Some additional information, Elliott Homes, the current covenanture of the Declaration of Restricted Covenants with the, and I think the intent was to convey the covenanture title to the HOA. I think that would be, and I don't know where they are in the planning or decision-making there. We've had some other conversations. The covenantureship allows for the modification of terms in coordination with the Corps of Engineers. I stopped and talked about that. But you do have to modify the permit. Otherwise, it remains in preservation and so that's what I'm kind of pushing for. And without, yeah, without modification of the restricted covenant, fire hazard management is prohibited. Forestry management practices would need to be ongoing in order to establish and keep manageable fuel loads in the vicinity of the proposed home. So once you get underway, it gets less expensive as you go and costs for the ongoing forestry management activities could substantially increase HOA fees. So we've talked about ways to offset it and only do what's necessary, create a managed buffer between the homes and, you know, the, the higher fuel loads to bring down the cost. My formal comment package includes the following. The requested conditions are stated. Supporting figures showing the April 2020 fire that ran through the Conservation Easement.
Just to let you know, you're coming up when you're five minutes.
Okay, thank you. The covenants of deeds are in there, some correspondence with the Corps, so just kind of, you know, it is there. And then the last thing I'll say is I realize in the first version of the conditions, I use words like fire hazard and things like that, that may have a legal connotation. I have a softer version, the idea is reduce the fire risk so we don't run into a situation that's already occurring in the land. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of that?
You.
Yeah, it's, it's. That's, okay. I didn't know if it was included. No, we're, we're.
No, just for the record, that was the item, made the motion to accept into the.
Right. I understand.
All right, so, and I'm not even sure who I'm asking this question to, but the copy of the current covenant that they have under reserved rights, wildlife and forestry management, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it pretty much says timber management is expressly understood to include periodic controlled burning or mowing where deemed advisable to mitigate the risk of wildfires. It appears to me like the current covenant already allows for what you're asking for.
Yeah, it, it does not. If you read it closer, and let me pull it out, it is tricky because it, it definitely allows for it, but the way that it's written now, it says if you want to do those activities, you've got to come back and amend. Right now, it's set up for preservation only.
Yeah, so the, the only stipulation it has on here is after approval by the mobile district engineer of the Corps of Engineers.
Correct, correct. And the way, so the way it's written now, if you, if you implement the permit as is, all you can do to the restricted covenants is watch it, is preservation. And I, and I think we agree on that. And I think we agree on that. I don't think that's the case. Well, and then the other thing is, that is the case. And the correspondence with the Corps of Engineer, which is attached with the...
I saw that.
And it's basically, so will we have to modify the permit in order to do management activities? And our answer is yes. You do, right now, the way it reads, let me pull it out. And Mitch, you don't think it is for some reason?
And we're hearing something contradictory to that.
We'll get the opportunity to respond.
Yeah, to write all comments to the commissioner. Kevin, if you don't mind, let's circle back around to this. All right, we're going to circle back around to that at the end of the public comment and let you time for that information. Does anybody else in the audience have for or against Madison Place preliminary plat? All right. Kevin, I guess that's...
Yeah, I've got some questions for the engineer.
Go ahead.
And actually, yeah, if one of y'all could come up to the mic so we can make sure that you're recorded. Go ahead.
Danny Blue, engineer for the project, 1073 South Carberry Road.
Thank you. So my first question is the first topic of the connector road. And Wade, if you have anything, please jump in on this. Is there a requirement for that connector road?
Well, the connector road, well, first off, the connector road was a requirement of the sketch plat approval. That was...
I remember that, yes.
And actually, the connection has been in the plans since both Lakeview and Madison Place were initially planted 10, 15 years ago. At that time, it was all the two different subdivisions were kind of moving forward at the same time. And with the idea that the Lakeview basically is one long dead-end cul-de-sacs.
Right.
The plan at that time was for the two subdivisions, Madison Place and Lakeview, to move forward with construction at about the same time. Then that connection would be provided with the construction of both subdivisions. Due to economic conditions and other things, Lakeview was built, Madison Place was only partly built. The first phase was only built. And the, that connection was delayed. I mean, as I said, it has been in the planning stages, planning process for years of the planning of both those two subdivisions.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is there a city requirement for it, or is it just good planning?
Typically, no, I don't, I can't say for sure this is in the UDC. But generally, subdivisions with more than 30 lots are required to have two points of access. That's a general design principle of subdivision development. So yes, to comply with that, that standard, yes, you would have to have two points of access.
Kevin, one thing, if I can, for Wade, I mean, for the commissioner, just so I understand as well. Are you saying that the sketch plat approval back in 2021, is that right?
Correct.
Was the connector road approved then?
That's why, that was part of that approval in 2021, correct.
So I've got a question, but to move this project forward, that connector road is not necessarily a needed thing, correct? Because they've got two points. They've got Madison and then Gibson.
It's not for the well-being of this project.
Right. It should have been something that would have gone in when the other subdivision would have come in. And that would have been the, we made it, I say we, whoever at that time, made an exception for the Lakeview area to not have that second.
It was...
Exit, ingress, egress.
Yeah, like I said, the plan at that time was for the connection, basically as you see there, to be developed in the long term due to the delays in the construction of Madison Place. It didn't happen.
As far as the fire code, this subdivision does defeat all.
Correct, and that it's...
The developer would rather not build the road because it, you know, took extra oil and its impacts and engineering approvals to get that done. But it's for, it was a requirement by the city for Lakeview.
Right, for the original sketch plat, but not for this preliminary plat? Okay, so the road is not required for this preliminary plat, the way it's designed right now?
I mean, it was part of the initial planning for it. I mean, it'd be hard to say that it was not required. That was never a, to not have the road was not a consideration. It's always been looked at that, yes, this layout is going to be there. Because I recall that over the years, we'd have various discussions about how to, what type of extension of Pine Haven would be appropriate. Because it was a recognition that there needs to be that connection for fire protection and other things.
For Pine Haven?
For Pine Haven to be connected, as you kind of see it.
Because Pine Haven only has a single entrance and exit.
Correct.
Right now.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, I'm just still having a tough time reconciling that this road has to be put in with this project.
I want to ask a question. So are we approving, if we approve this, are we approving, the road's already been approved, correct?
It was approved with the sketch plat, which is the initial planning phase for this subdivision.
So if we approve this tonight, are we approving, further approving the road also?
Yes, you're approving that layout that you see right there. Is that, is it my interesting request?
Unless in the motion, we exclude the road in the motion.
That's what I wanted to add.
Sure you can do that.
So in one of the drawings that I saw, and it didn't have the homes or anything like that. It did have the new cul-de-sac. It had the areas, has like a Madison Place extension. But there were some detention, retention ponds that were in, and one of them was down there by that road.
Detention's south of that.
South, okay, okay. That's what I was curious. Okay. Can you see?
It was actually down here in the phase.
That's it, okay.
That's it. And this is the road.
Size large enough to, for all the, they had duplex, the original sub design duplex units all in there. And now with this design, there's actually less work going to the detention pond. Now, the detention pond does need to be repaired. It's got the controlled outlet of the detention pond is broken. And there was a beaver living in there. And it, and it looked, the last time I went out there, it looked like someone maybe got him out. But actually walking back in the areas north of this terrain, and it's there again. I've been here. Looks like there is some beaver activity in there. There's some beaver dams that's blocking water in that area, so. But the detention pond is now actually oversized for what's being disturbed in this phase in the ocean space.
All right, Kevin, do you have any more comments?
I'm good right now. I'm ready to close public hearing with... So I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, unanimous? All right.
All right, so here's what I'm thinking of. I'm thinking we recommend approval of the preliminary plat. We included in the motion and the notes that Wade has that the sidewalk's going from four feet to five feet. Lot 22 accessed for clean concrete ditch. Outside agencies, approvals from outside agencies, Department of Quality, Mississippi Department of Health, Corps of Engineers, et cetera. And the transition in the sidewalk on Madison Place Drive and West. The one I would add is that, or was it the, not the Whispering Pines, what was your HOA?
I just called it Madison Place 1 plus Madison Place 2.
Okay.
I don't know that we have a name for it yet.
Yeah, that between Elliot Holmes and the Madison Place HOAs, continue to work with the Corps of Engineers and ensure that we have an agreement on what the legal language is. From my reading of this and my take, I think they already have the ability to do that. All they need is approval from the Corps of Engineers. That's my opinion, not a legal opinion. But that's what I read in this. But I think y'all can work together to get the right language, and if there is a new covenant, we can get the new covenant. Remember, this has got to come back to us again for anything is built. I would like to know the other commissioner's thoughts on the road. I see...
There's other subdivisions that have been recently built within the county that's now within the city, be it the enclave, be it down the Greyhound Way, that they've only got one access point of egress into the subdivisions, so.
Mr. Henning, real quick this afternoon, I came up with 12.
Okay. So what?
And multiple homes, over 100 homes on some of them.
Right.
Matt, you just, kind of, there's one thing Kevin said.
Yeah.
In terms from a legal perspective, I would advise in terms of a contingency motion on an HOA or covenant issue to stay away from. We're getting outside of the UDC there in terms of owner and private homeowner.
Yeah.
We've gotten issues before on short-term rentals with HOA and covenants. So, you know, it certainly encourages them to work together, but in terms of the city's motion tying it to an HOA or covenants, I would advise to stay away from it.
Stay away, okay. I mean, just looking at the map, I don't see somebody who's trying to enter this new subdivision, even if that connector road is there, going all the way down Lakeview Drive, up around Pine Haven Drive to get to their home. I mean, it would certainly just go up Gibson Road. So I personally don't think it would increase traffic to the point where it would probably even be noticeable. Having said that, if there's no road, I wouldn't be hurt either. So, anybody else have any opinions?
Who's constructing the road? Who's responsible for the...
The developer will be responsible for the road construction.
I mean, the only benefit I would see would be for the residents that live back on Pine Haven Drive to be able to have another access point out, but to be a main way of traffic. I don't see it being a, really a benefit. And where they're proposing to put that road is like right next to detention pond retention, so. Marshall, thoughts?
I don't know. I think having additional access for not only emergency vehicles, but, you know, trash pickup and everything else makes sense. And it was in the original sketch plats, so I don't see, I'm just leaving it there.
Joseph?
I don't think it's going to change traffic too much because it's at the back of that property. It just, it could be a shortcut for some people, but only if they live way in the back.
Joey?
I mean, if it's not legally needed and it's actually, it's an extra cost to the developer, I don't see the purpose. I mean, it was already approved through the first, so.
Well, the first one back done in '21 has changed, their plating has changed since then, so.
What are we looking at in the future there? We need the road in the future?
Right, and that's the whole...
Nick, I'm going to lean on you on that one.
So, yeah, the fireside, I'm torn because obviously we like seeing multiple ways in and out of a, any neighborhood that has, like you said, any 30 more home, single-family residences, you need to in and out. And that's why I'm torn because the plat or whatever we're about to approve has that. They have Gibson, they have Madison Place. Everything's good. You know, roads are wide enough for emergency vehicles to get up and down and around. So it's really kind of a, I mean, we're talking about something that should have been addressed.
All right, here's a, here's a hypothetical, and I'm thinking there's a couple of areas in Ocean Springs. I'm trying to rattle them off in my head right now with that.
You can come up with some, because this is a code that was adopted. This is one that came into play more recent time than old. So you could have older neighborhoods.
Well, I'm not referring to older neighborhoods. There's a couple of neighborhoods that have easement or access points, but they're not for traffic per se, only emergency fire situations to be able to take that off. I think one's off of Handshaw down behind the church back there. And it's not for residential traffic. It's only for emergency responders. So is this something that...
You're talking about like gating it, closing it all?
Yeah, that, yeah, that it basically would be put in place, but it would only be for emergency access.
I think you run into some legal issues when you start limiting what traffic comes.
Well, there's already, I think there's about four areas in Ocean Springs right now that have that. Wade?
Yeah, I think kind of there's one part of the seaside, of course, that comes to mind.
Yeah, that's it.
It has the gated, that's not locked. It's accessible by fire departments and other emergency vehicles on the backside to Bronbow. His main access, single point of access is onto East Beach Drive. Can't off the top of my head think of others, but that's, I said, that's the first one that comes to mind. But typically, when I'm looking at a cul-de-sac of that length, the recommendation would be to have a secondary point of access to get into it if you were looking at that right now. In some fashion, secondary access.
Like I said, I always would prefer to see two, you know, accesses to, but we're not talking about their neighborhood per se. And they're not planning on developing along this road. You're going to have a pond that they're going to have to either drill or put in. And it's just going to be woods with maybe a house right there on the corner. On the Gibson side, Gibson and I guess Pine Haven is what it would be on, if I'm not mistaken, if that ran all the way through. I'm just...
But your fireman hat says...
I mean, I would love to see a road for every big neighborhood.
On a safety standpoint, I lean on it having a second egress.
But to put that on this developer, I don't see...
Yeah, unfortunately for this developer, they've already signed up for it.
Right, right. So that's where I'm kind of torn on.
Yeah, so the way I look at this development and the way it's happening, the only, I can only imagine a maximum of eight houses actually using that road to get access to anywhere else in Ocean Springs. Because, I mean, with Gibson Road right there, why wouldn't they just pop onto Gibson and take a straight shot down? I don't think it's going to increase traffic through the neighborhood. I do like safety, having that road there for a second access in case there is a forest fire or something and they need to get to it, or road's blocked, whatever it is, being able to get to the residents, the current residents. Believe me, if I thought this road would be a major artery for this subdivision through your neighborhood, I would not agree to it. I would not. But I just don't think it's going to bring that much traffic to your neighborhood, if any, actually.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion with...
Sorry, one thing. Given there's six of you, obviously, you know, a 3-3 tie is a failed vote. So that's not to say you can't make a subsequent motion on something else, but just a 3-3 tie is a failed, so just want to make sure that's clear.
So the motion I'm going to make is to approve the plat with Wade's comments that are on the end of notes about the everything else. And if y'all want to vote it down, go ahead and vote it down. I'll be happy with that.
So Will?
What was the motion to approve the plat with Wade's comments?
I haven't made it yet. I was just letting them know what my motion was going to be, and if they want to vote against it, I'm cool with that.
So this is preliminary, correct? They're still going to come up?
Again.
Again.
For final.
The road could be discussed again, correct?
Well, with this approval, if the preliminary plat is approved by the board, they would have the authority to start construction on the plane you see right there. That...
You're talking about underground infrastructure, right, Wade?
Yeah, underground, uh, start the streets, there are sewers.
So the street, the street we're talking about, they could start on that?
Exactly.
Okay, not homes.
No home construction was started until...
Yeah. All right.
What about the addendum in front of you about the fire management?
Because that's between the HOA and the developer, and it's not a city issue, we're going to leave that out and let them deal with it on their own.
Can I address the board one more time?
Yes.
There was an unofficial poll that 19% of the residents of the 160 homes within the Lakeview area responded to. They laying out the fact, understanding that first responders and emergency services would not have easy access in case of obstruction, and this road would ease that, they would rather not have it. That's in the, the respondents, 79% responded, "I would rather take the risk of not having easy access to first responders in the neighborhood than it is." Some of them did, and others, others not so much. It's not unanimous, but those numbers are out there. There was only 37 people who responded to a Facebook polling. The emergency services and concerns for evacuations and those things were specifically thrown around in the poll, a type of a cell, maybe a simple, very much majority of the neighborhood was...
I understand.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment on the fire?
Yeah, yes.
The conditions 1 and 2 have nothing to do with the HOA, and by changing the conservation easement, you now have houses adjacent to a fire hazard. And so what I'd like to do is ask you to reconsider condition 1 and 2. I mean, if you allow construction as it is, and the current plan to just give the conservation easement over to the HOA, we are stuck with a management. We're stuck with a fire hazard, we're having to go back to the course, so that ties back into the permit. The way the permit's written now, it still needs approval to do this work.
Okay.
I understand that. They're going to have to get Corps of Engineer approval before they do anything. One of the stipulations we have is Corps of Engineer approval. So, I mean, that's going to happen, but from the city's point of view, this isn't our lane.
Well, isn't it your fire department that's going to come out and put that fire on?
That's why we're talking about roads and access and things like that. It's the Corps of Engineers and Wildlife Management, Forestry and Wildlife Management to deal with the forest.
You're approving houses adjacent to a fire hazard.
If it meets the UDC codes and standards, if it's outside of that, it's not a purview of this committee. I'm sorry.
Can I add more real quick, please?
Now we can.
Five hundred people go to bed tonight in subdivisions that only have one access in and out.
All right, so, no, hold on.
Wade?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any way that we could put a recommendation on approval of the preliminary sketch plat tabling the road extension over to Pine Haven Drive? And that's a Will question also.
Yeah, I mean...
Is your intention, you want to review that specific portion?
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, the rest of the preliminary plat.
It's just a seat on?
I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how you could split that out, really, in a practical sense, too.
What if they, if that were to happen, they were to reconsider that road extension in the final plating phase, and then be considered to be approved or disapproved at that point as well?
I would agree with that.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't see any issue with that.
Yeah, that would be, possibly, I mean, it's, until it is, until you have homes constructed on it, or until it's actually accepted, you know, modifications to that connection can be dealt with.
Because there's a stretch of that connection that will not have any plaques or parcels adjacent to it, so that would be my recommendation, but I'm going to let the rest of the commission think that one over.
So to clarify that, you're saying that we can approve this with the question of the access road to be addressed in the final plat?
I believe so. And any potential motion, just like Kevin mentioned and Wade, just for, if you can confirm, you've got the information on those preliminary plat and four items, those are to be provided for a final approval, is that right?
That would all be, yes, that would be part of the final, part of the preliminary approval that would have to be dealt with prior to final plat approval, by the planning mission at board.
Okay, so...
It's a, as Kevin listed.
So after a potential approval of preliminary plat, they'll have to provide those four items?
Correct.
And it's basically, the road can be constructed up to Lot 51. From Lot 51, go into Pine Haven Drive would be further review at the final.
Will be determined at the final plat approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and the reason we're doing this is that, as you realize, we make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman. So when this gets to them, their objections about the road go to the Board of Alderman. They have that in their memory, so when the final plat comes to them, they will provide guidance to us and, you know, you know where you are. But you get a chance to speak to them before they make a decision on the final one, okay? I think we've taken care of your concerns for tonight.
An issue that, if we do that, one issue that we're going to run into, and correct me if I'm wrong, is those eight houses on what would be Pine Haven Extension, and we cap it off there, it's going to have to end up being like a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead for emergency vehicles to go down, turn around.
Exactly.
You know, that sort of stuff. Yes, sir.
You change the footprint for the permit, to the weapon permit, then that needs to be a modification to the permit, which requires it to go back through full Oregon ear, DMRT to approve. Start completely over.
So you're saying if we take the road out, you got to go back and get all those approvals again?
No, if you stop the road in its current location, it would be fine. If you have to, if you have to impact additional weapons in a bullnose or in a cul-de-sac, then that would require another permit modification.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me.
Okay.
What we did, well, project is, is kind of, was, actually had kind of the same situation. They wanted access across the golf course fairway, and what they required is an all over surface limestone drive with a gate, that the fire department could pass through if they needed. So the fire access was there, but it was gated off where no one could use it, plus it was just a limestone.
So how would we, how would we go about doing something like that, Will?
I think we've done it before, like we discussed. I would like to evaluate that further with Wade and Fire Department on, I forget the name of, something that's been used at subdivision in the past in terms of the, whatever you call it, box, but...
Box, box.
Box, box.
What about the...
I'm not saying that that's the end-all-be-all, but I would like to, I can't give a definitive a, let's do this tonight, I would, but I do think it's been utilized previously.
Well, we'll just make it a condition of approval of the final plat, to have that resolved.
Between now and then, we could discuss it.
Right.
The engineers, right now, I had to add, just to...
And the Fire Department.
We're okay with that. We just, you know, respectfully ask, you know, we don't, you can put that to the motion and, you know, if what Mitch had mentioned, if we have to, you know, do hammerheads or anything, going back to the court is going to put us back another two years, maybe in a year or two.
We're going to do everything possible to not make you go through that process again, especially considering we've already approved the sketch plat.
Right, I mean, I mean, if we can, you know, do something like that, I mean, we put that earlier because it was our apartment of the city, and we're just trying to, you know, follow those regulations, but we're open to...
And that's why I was saying something about the cul-de-sac or anything like that. Once you start capping off, I would rather see the road there for future access. I'm sure the Fire Department is going to want to see the road there, now whether it is gated with an ox box or just a padlock that can be easily cut. I mean, every fire truck carries a bolt cutter, so we'll make access. We've got plenty of tools for that, so...
I think moving forward with, you know, making a final decision on it in the final plat, just leave it be where we can get a definitive approval.
Okay. Anybody else before I take a stab at this? Yeah. Make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Madison Place Phase 2, contingent upon providing a transition in the sidewalk on Madison Place Drive at its west end, where it terminates at the alley to Westwind Court, provide an easement by Lot 22 for access to clean the concrete ditch. A pedestrian circulation system, a minimum of five feet width, is required to connect to other sidewalks, trails, and conservation areas. Provide approvals from the outside agencies of the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, Mississippi Department of Health, Corps of Engineers, and all other required agencies. Also contingent upon the removal, truncation, or alteration of the connector road between Gibson and Pine Haven will be resolved before approval of the final plat.
I'll give it that way. You got anything else?
No, I think that's sufficiently, gives us the direction where to go to it, but not being exactly how to be laid out. Yeah, I think that's perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
All right.
All right, moving on to under new business, it is 7515 Peacock Street, Gulf Coast Diggs requesting a lot split.
Can you all take conversations outside, please? Thank you. Sorry. No, thank you. Everybody.
My name's John Gaskill.
Oh, we haven't gone to public hearing yet. Just one second. Thank you.
All right. All right, so, requesting a lot split of 5715 Peacock Street, P.I.N. 6105, 7134.940. Do I have a motion to go to into public comment?
Motion.
Second. Will Wade talk first?
No, I'm going to.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Wade?
Thank you. Okay, yeah, don't make this up pretty great. It's very, it's simple, straightforward. This is in the area that's being annexed by Ocean Springs. You see, you can see, there's the, there's the current layout. What it is, this is taking three lots, which are in the, I think it's R4, actually High Density Residential District. They are laid out for single-family dwellings. To take those three lots that are kind of shown there, the 242, 241, and 240, and merge them through a lot split application into two lots. There. Two lots showing like that there, one slightly larger and more built away, so go ahead.
Elizabeth, you want to just step in out there and just tell them to either step out or step down the hall?
Just for the, Wade, just for the record purpose, the motion was a motion for public comment, this in the public hearing, right?
That's all right, correct. It's not a public hearing, that's fine.
And I'm sure the commissioners will take comment.
And the lots proposed are certainly compliant. They're larger than what was originally approved, so that standpoint, they're compliant with the lot R4, zoning district.
Thank you, Wade. Does any of the commissioners have any comment before we open it to the Africa? No. John?
Yes, sir. My name's John Gaskill. The 100th circle in the area of Ocean Springs. Not a lot discussed. I got three lots, so I was trying to make them two and build a few rental properties in there.
All right, thank you, John.
Yes, sir. All right.
Do I have, uh... That one person wants to...
If this is in a public hearing, why did I get a notice to appear?
Ma'am, you're welcome to...
To dispute it?
Ma'am, you can talk to Mike. You're both in the comment.
That's in my trouble, man. You can stay from some...
No, I got here.
Sorry.
I didn't want to be here, but here we are. Don't want to take all your time, you're just getting up here.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name's Stacy Cheeseman. I live at 8605 Plymouth Road. Okay, this is the property that's directly behind me. I've already had major issues with just the prepping of the property, and the roads out there are not great. I've been there 20 years. You guys, the county worked on them. You guys are putting water in, you're putting sewer in. Everything's tore up. Everything's already in rough shape. We had major water issues, you guys. They came out and cleaned out some of the ditches. It's not as bad, but the ditches still do flood over the road, and yes, it is a major circle, and the problem that we run into, you see that dead man curve right there? It's on both sides of Plymouth Road. So it, the CC camp was supposed to go all the way through the sunflats, but that never got done. So there's dead man curves on either side. Since the city has taken over our subdivision, the increased traffic out there just from all the work trucks is tearing up the road, there's been 15 people in my ditch since you guys started building out there that had to get towed out because that is a dead man's curb, and the bus already has a problem getting in and out. So if you allow him to put two houses behind me, and all that land is already, all those people out there were just waiting for you guys to annex this so they could sell their properties. So if you allow him to divide that into two parcels, everybody else that's trying to sell their land is going to want to do the same thing. And so you're going to have all these people in here, and if it's three lots that was zoned for, I feel like, one, yeah, I'm not, I don't have money like a lot of people do. I've been there 20 years, I'm hoping to retire out there, and we live at the very end, and it has gotten awful just trying to get in and out of the neighborhood. So, I mean, I understand the revenue for the city, but there's already housing developments going in. Across Riley Road, they have $200,000 HOA over there, and there's the land across it, they've cleared that out, they're planning to build on that, and there is a bunch of land back in there. I don't see why we need two houses on those, on that lot.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would you rather him build three houses? Because that's what he can do right now. He can build three houses.
I know he can build three houses.
So instead of building three, he's only going to build two.
Well, you know, if that's your attitude, that's fine. You don't have to live, and like I said, he's already been a bad thing to add.
I can't prevent him from building on his property. I can't prevent him from building on his property.
Well, then, I don't know why you guys sent me the letter. That's why nobody else from the neighborhood came, 'cause we know you're not gonna do anything for us.
I mean, you want us to confiscate his land and tell him he can't build on it?
No, but he's already got other land that he's bought out there.
That's his right.
He had a fire so big that I had ambers on my front porch.
Okay, that's, that's an issue for, that's an issue for the police and the Fire Department?
Right.
So, she doesn't understand that you can build one less house there ahead and register it.
Ms. Stacy, the, the property that is his lot to the south, if you were in your backyard, you look to the south right there, those two parcels that are the south of him are actually smaller than what he's wanting to divide that lot right now. By right, right now, how the zoning is, he could build multiple structures on that property. By him dividing the property, he's only gonna be allowed to build two structures on that property with all the setbacks. So, right now, he could overbuild the property with duplexes, et cetera. What he's wanting to do is take it where it's only gonna allow one structure with a lot setbacks to give a buffer zone around there. So, my whole heart says it's gonna give a lot more protection to you where is right now, how the property is zoned, it could be built out with a lot of structures on the property of how the zoning is. So, I, I understand your feeling on that and everything, and I know several of the residents around there. I just, there is a lot of little lots that are adjacent to it that are smaller. But I think by doing it in this way, it's gonna give you more protection and the residents around there. I would hate to see a duplex come in and have multiple duplexes stacked on that property. So, so, thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Thanks, sir. Listen.
I guess since we'd like, you can talk, does anybody else want?
Yeah, I'm gonna have, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to?
He's just here.
Alright.
He's just here. I'm about to see him.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend approval of the lot split at 5717 Peacock Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Yeah, Ms. Alright, moving on to general public comment, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Done? Alright.
Yeah, I would, I would actually.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Bronx Garrika, Ward, Ward, Ward 2, Ward 2. So, I'm just, I need, I know y'all are the ones who know about this. If, if, if a house, like, 'cause I see houses, new houses going up all over town and five foot from the property line, right? So, if I have a house and it's, it's over five foot from my property line, can I add square footage to my house?
Obviously, the commissioner has this implication, and that's an issue, and it's the setbacks related to.
You can voice your concerns, but we can't really give you comment on that because we've been obstructed.
Mark, if there's ongoing litigation, we can't discuss it.
But we would like to hear your comments on it.
Okay. Well, I don't know, hey, house, okay, I got, I got a, a nice fellow, Brenda, he's got a Bay Pass, I know y'all know that. He has a house right over here on Buckland. He bought the house, hey, it was an old house, it's five foot from the property line. He added a whole bunch of square footage on it. So, I went and I got his architect and developer to help me write up a plan. And my plan is beautiful, but then I was told that my house had to be 10 foot from the property line. And when he said, I think, so the fellow who, who told me, I think, I think it has to be 10, but he doesn't really know the stipulations, he knows law, but he doesn't. So, I'm seeing it go, hey, Matthew Mayfield, numerous people, hey, five feet from the property line, and then they've added a ton of square footage. So, I wanted, I mean, that's, it shouldn't, it doesn't matter, it should just be a simple question. If I, if my house is more than five foot from property line, can I not add square footage?
Mark, if I could stop you real quick, so the, what you're, the questions you're asking are actually zoning an adjustment. The ZAB board that meets before our meeting, they would probably be the ones that would wanna hear, hear that. That's just to elaborate a little bit, but go ahead.
Okay, how about this? Lots, lots, they need to be, what, 60 foot? Lots downtown, they gotta be 60 foot wide. Is that correct?
Depends on what their zone is.
What are the houses downtown, what are they zoned?
R, R1 is 100.
R1 is 100?
With 13.5 on buildable. R2, R2 is 80 with 11, 11.5, but I don't wanna get too far into this 'cause, pardon.
No, that, that's a different property. I'm, I'm, now discussing a different property. You can, you can talk about this one, and that's a whole, hey, obviously, I know I can't split my lot, I mean, I can't split mine, so now I'm talking about a different one.
Okay, as long as it's, it's not something in litigation.
Yeah, well, it's not, not yet at least. Hey, I, I, I'll feel confident that when I go to do something, I probably will get there, but, but it's not, it's not my property right now. So, if I, if, if a property, if a property right now, so what it, I, I see, I saw the thing, what has, what is 60 foot? What, what zone is that?
60 is gonna be R3, and that's the new R3.
R3?
The new R3. The old R3 is 50.
Yeah, R3 is 70 feet.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the.
Yeah, R, R3, the lot width has to be 70 feet, front yard setback of 25 feet, side yard setback of seven feet, rear yard setback of 25 feet. So, it all depends on what zone the property is, is what the setbacks are. And if you can't meet the setbacks, then you go in front of the ZAB and you ask for a.
Variance.
Yeah, variance.
Okay, and so if you want like the lot splits and all that stuff, you just go in front of zoning?
So, lot splits are us.
Lot splits are us.
Yeah, and merging lots and things like that, but zoning an adjustment board is the one that says you are zoned in R2, here's your parameters, if you want to go outside of those parameters, you need to come to us for approval. Actually, the Board of Alderman for approval, you've just gotta go through them to get to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, let me ask you this. If, if, 'cause I heard the term, but I, it was, it was foreign term to me, so I can't recall what it was, but if, what is it where, like, if you're not allowed to, hey, if you're, if they say can't do something, but your neighbor's doing it, like your neighbor, you can't do this when your neighbor did it, or you can't do this.
Yeah, okay. No comment on that one.
What kind of stuff can I ask y'all again, then?
Anything not to do with anything under litigation.
Mr. Garrett, you're in a lawsuit with the city right now.
Yeah, anything that is under litigation, we cannot comment on.
You're also represented by counsel, and we can't talk to you about the litigation.
Right. Well, the, the whole reason I'm where I'm at is 'cause I wasn't getting the help in the first place, right? I mean, if, if, if I could've got some help in the first place, I wouldn't be where I'm at right now, right? I mean, when you, when you told me that, that you represented Ocean Springs, and when I asked you, I need to, so you represent Ocean Springs, I said, well, I am Ocean Springs. I said, I'm not trying to fight y'all, but I couldn't get any help at the time, right?
Getting attorney and.
Mark, I can't speak with you on your, your, your.
The good news is the fellow that gave me permission has been hired back, so we gotta think, that was the whole, the whole thing was that you retired, right? And so, the new lady wasn't buying it, but the fellow that gave me permission.
That's, that's in the form for this, please. Yeah. Alright. Is there anybody else in public comment? Alright, gonna move on to Commissioners' forum.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, does, Wade, do we know the new status of the comprehensive plan and what's going on with it? Where is it? What's doing? Where's it going?
It's, the consultants, Slaughter Associates is still working on some of the edits to it. I'm going, my plan is to contact Mr. Slaughter and get a status report on it and, and see if it'll be enough a state to put it on the next planning commission agenda. If we, if it is, we'll certainly, you know, get the draft out there on the city's website well in advance of the, the meeting as soon as possible, and just see where we're going on it.
Okay.
But we just need to discuss that with consultants, see where they are.
Do we wanna do a work session before it comes before us with the draft?
I think, I, I think that would be advisable, but that's obviously, that's a decision y'all would like to take, but I would think that would be.
Yeah, as, as far as I know, they are continuing to bill us, so the faster we can get this wrapped up.
Yeah, but I think for all purposes, we need to have a work session to vet it before it becomes before our, our monthly meeting.
Yeah, also, also, we have, you know, provided comments on that, I don't know where they are in terms of what went to the consultants.
Three months ago?
Yeah.
I've got, I've got some work to do on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so, I'll find out, we'll be letting y'all know as soon as possible, you know, where things are.
Yeah, please let them know that we are anxious to get this wrapped up.
Who are we?
Sorry, I'm anxious to get this wrapped up.
You are anxious.
I apologize.
Joseph, any comment?
Go ahead.
Nick?
Solid.
Alright.
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? You now, Ms.
Alright.